Call the meeting to order for October 1st at 6:30. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as may be amended. So, do you have any reason to change anything? No?
Okay.
Did you?
No, it's not a change. It was just a question. One of the things, and I did not put it on the agenda, was talking to our attorney before the tax sales. If the town would like to place the bid at the lowest amount because we don't think anybody's going to come, and we would then start the clock so that then the town would be able to deal with it, we would need a motion from the select board, but it is not on the agenda. So, if we can handle it under department updates, that's fine. If not, and I need to put it on the agenda. If we want to move in that direction, we can have that conversation later. Then we would just need to have a quick special meeting before next Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't think we can vote on anything that's not on the agenda.
And that's how I felt, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Hi Jim.
Hello. This is for you.
Munnies?
Well, I did the certified letter for La Croix.
Oh, thank you.
I sent her the, I forwarded your text.
I didn't have her cell phone, so. She asked me to send a registered letter out for her.
Okay.
So, I sent her my copy. They want to make sure they got it out.
Okay. It's okay with me.
All right.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of September 17th as may be amended, please say aye.
Aye.
I did not have anything on mine. Was it in this that there was something? No, it wasn't in the minutes. Okay. You guys have anything? The minutes?
No.
In favor of accepting the minutes of Tuesday, September 17th as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Select board concerns that are not on the agenda.
Happy birthday Chuck. Fifty years old.
Wow. I apologize, I forgot to go get a cupcake.
Do you want us everybody to sing happy birthday to you?
No. Thank you for the wishes.
Very good. For me, everything else is on the agenda.
Okay.
Dedicated.
Yeah.
Fifty, and he's here.
Let the folks come in and sit down. Citizen input. Do you folks have anything that's not already on the agenda? Yes, no? You look like you want to say something.
So, I know today we're speaking about the rental control application rental proposal. Is there anything to share on that in terms of the wording of the zoning changes or the updates on the process?
We're going to talk about it, and that's why Steve had said, is there anything here that's not on the agenda? I mean, if you have input later on, we're going to talk about it. But zoning, zoning change.
The zoning language is not on the, not on the discussion tonight.
Yeah, there's no zoning things or whatever going on here.
The question, the question that happened at the last select board meeting was if we were going to move forward with this, what would the budget look like? So, I did a quick financial analysis of what it would look like. The language is still at the attorney's office. We're not talking about the specifics. It was just, so for a placeholder, we know, okay, if we were going to add it to the, to the budget, these are the things that we have to add.
Okay, and that's what will be discussed tonight?
That's the only thing we're discussing.
Okay. So, everything else is still?
It's still in the same place it was two weeks ago.
There's no voting on anything tonight. It's, we're looking at some information that's come in.
Yeah, no, I understood. I just wanted to know kind of where the proposal was in the stages as well.
Okay. All right.
I mean, do we have anything to share of what we're looking at on the two per bedroom or the?
Well, the two per bedroom is the-
Because I think that's what a lot of people are out there and-
That's already in the zoning.
Right.
Our zoning allows two people per bedroom.
Unless the state says otherwise.
Unless the state says otherwise, and unless, and one thing that we talked about with the registration program was the possibility of saying, well, somebody has a two-bedroom house and they have a couch that pulls out, that's at least six people. So, you can say two people per bedroom plus two or three or under three years old don't count or whatever those rules are.
These are things that we're flying through.
Right.
Not flying, but discussing with the attorney that it could be a, a three-bedroom is six plus two or three, which would get you up to eight or nine.
So, we're coming up, we're trying to come up with some language to make sure it meets with statute.
Okay. So, that's still in discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
With this topic, shouldn't it be judged on what the water system for the house?
That's part of it.
Can take, because you could have a very large bedroom that could easily sleep four people.
The whole purpose of the, of the registration program, and we're getting ahead of ourselves, is to basically create an information centralization so that people understand the rules that, that already exist. There's no new rules being written. I mean, if you rent a house for short-term rentals, you have to meet division of fire safety. You have to meet your wastewater requirements. You should have renters insurance on your, on your properties. So, all this is, is to say, do you meet all those things? What is your house allowed to have? Okay? And if, if Act 250 supersedes, whatever approvals you have will continue to be there within the rules. There are some, from what we understand, we're in litigation with one, who've exceeded those numbers, which is kind of what's driving this. But from a health and safety perspective, the town is just trying to say, is everybody aware and do they know and are you meeting the requirements that you're allowed and not inadvertently putting everybody at risk?
Got it.
That's what it's about.
So, septic permit is part of that along with drinking water. But those things are already in place and they're actually handed down to us from the state.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, when I bought my house, it was rated for, I think it was eight adults working full-time, and it had something to do with the capacity of the septic.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, because if somebody wants to go from three to six, they got to go get a new wastewater permit and meet division of fire safety. That's, that's the issue. And, and for a lot of people, they just, they're not aware. So.
I didn't come here to talk about that, but I did come here to talk about another topic from last week. And I saw in the papers, there was something about the beaver dams.
Beaver dams, yeah.
And kayaks and everything. First, I didn't know, I know that you were in touch with some of the authorities from fish and wildlife and stuff. Do you remember this publication?
Yes.
Okay, great. I wasn't, and I've known it for a long time, and it was some interesting stuff in here.
Right.
So, if you're familiar with that, great. The second point is the kayaks that put in at Thundering Brook. Why aren't they using the facilities that were built five years ago down in the Onakichi with, at Raybeck Mountain Road down to Mission Farm?
You'd have to ask the operator.
Okay.
I don't know why they are.
Brought that up?
Yep.
I mean, you build facilities for that activity.
Right.
It's quite convenient to do it there.
It is.
Okay, but they insist on using that area?
I believe the person was using the area long before that area was even done. Does he, I mean, anyone's allowed to go in this river if they want to.
Any, any river, anybody can do what they're going to do. I just know that prior to the beaver dams, which, and speaking with people at, former select board member who talked about what was going on at the time, that was, you weren't passable with kayaks before the beavers. And that's happened in the last 15 or 20 years that, that it's even changed, so. But that's, that's where it is.
Well, it's back full strength. Want to walk it back where it was?
Yep, I know.
Busy like.
Busy like beefers. All right, thank you. Number six, Kings Pine sign violation.
Yeah, this is an informational thing for tonight. The, at the top of Mountain View Drive, there's a sign, it's a, basically a real estate sign for selling property. It, there was a sign there previously. I don't know what was done about it, but there's never been a sign permit issued for that. So, a new sign was erected. The butter approached the town and mentioned that she thought it might be on her property and that the sign was not allowed. Subsequently, we had conversations with the landowner. The sign has several violations and they have, to date, refused to take it down. And it's, and it's in violation based on Section 4403B, which prohibits signs without a permit. Section 44012A, which prohibits off-premise signs. The property in question has a right-of-way through someone's property to that area but does not have access to Killington Road. So, you cannot have an off-premise sign. And Section 44012B, which prohibits signs erected within the town's right-of-way. And that sign is in the town's right-of-way along the edge of the road. It is within 12 feet of the, of the road. So, for those three violations, we have issued a zoning violation. And the person who's received the violation will have 15 days to appeal. After seven days, if the correction's not made, the $200 a day assessment may be assessed. So, basically, after the seven days, if the select board chooses, we can say that after the seven days without a correction or an appeal, we would start the $200 a day fine. And that would be up to you guys if you want to institute that now or wait till the next meeting to see if, if they do that.
So, number one, is it $200 per day for each violation? And you have three violations here.
We're calling this one zoning violation, so it would be $200 a day for the whole thing.
Want to make sure, because it's one signing.
Right.
Want to make sure we're on, you know, $600 a day. I mean, we're, what I'm reading here is we're giving them seven days to file, or 15 days to-
Fifteen days for an appeal or seven days to take action. And taking action could be, we're going to take it down next week and we're fine with that.
Right. Has this letter go out or it hasn't gone out?
I believe that this was waiting for the select board to approve and will go out.
Okay, because I see a letter here dated September-
So, the date it went out.
I see a letter dated September 26th and signed by the zoning administrator.
I did not see this go out, certified mail, I believe. But it, I think, I think it actually did go out, so I apologize.
Okay, so it's been September 26th.
Right.
And the person lives in Schenectady, New York, so you'd have to think that they just about got it?
Yeah.
Is it from the date of the letter or is it from the?
It's from the receipt.
The actual receipt of it.
When we get the certification.
Someone may not receive it for 10 days or whatever, so it's out.
We'll know when they get it because it's certified mail.
Right. But so you're just asking us if you want us to uphold our laws and have a $200 fine. So, I make a motion to move ahead with enforcing the zoning violation with $200 per day.
Right, after the seven days.
Okay, so I have a question before I vote on it.
After the seven days of receipt.
From receipt, right.
I think the fact that it lists 15 days in one place and seven days in another place needs some clarification.
No, actually, the seven days, the, the appeal does not stop the fines. Okay? So, what would happen is, is you would start assessing the fine. We don't start collections at that point, but you start assessing the fine the day after the seventh day. If after the 15 days they appeal, the $200 a day continues to move until they hear the appeal. If they win the appeal, it then goes away. If they lose the appeal, the $200 a day stays in place.
This is almost like where we have a fine that says the medical marijuana is $800, but if you pay 700 without contesting.
Right.
You save 100 bucks. So, this is, you have, once you receive this letter and we have confirmation you received it, you have seven days from that day to take the sign down and nothing will happen. Correct?
Yes.
Then, if you, after the seven days, you still have another eight days to get a letter into the town saying that you want to appeal it to the zoning board. But during that, during those eight days, you're still, can be fined if you lose in the appeal process.
Well, only if the sign is there.
Right.
Right.
If they take the sign down, there's no violation.
Correct.
So, they can appeal the fact that it had to be taken down.
Right.
And in this case, I don't know how they find, I mean, with the three different things that are listed, I don't know how they find a spot near that driveway that they could put it on. Did you have another?
Well, that's the issue. So, I mean, the, the number one issue is the second violation. Well, I mean, the number one issue is without a permit. But the next one is prohibits off-premises signs. So, I cannot advertise my business on your property. And that's what is actually being said here.
Okay.
So, they need to bring this sign in for a permit and they need to get it on their property.
Which, yeah.
Number one, and keep it out of the town right-of-way, number two.
Actually, the offer is where they could go to a straight real estate sign, the small little wire ones, or even a, a wayfinding type sign where we put it at the road and they could say Kings Pines that way, but it can't be a for-sale sign off-premise.
But I think a lot of people don't understand is that we have a sign permit rule that you need to file for any signs. The signs that were at the butternut, even though that they're same, Castleton uses the same size sign and everything, we still filed a permit with the town zoning and paid the fee to show the design.
Because it's a new sign.
Well, it's, it's, you know, really, I mean, I told you not, it's the design of the sign, what it's going to say and everything else. So, I believe they had a sign up at one point.
Yes, there was a sign that predated this one.
That predated this, but they weren't in, well, we didn't have them in violation?
We did not issue zoning violations, they were told, and my understanding, I guess it was just not followed up on.
Okay. So, but anyway, they, they took that sign down and put a bigger sign up.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on what the seven and 15 days represented.
I mean, I would think it would be weird if you were going to appeal it because you thought you were going to win and you're going to take down the sign to put it back up later. But people could do that.
Maybe they have to put it in another place. So, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of accepting the motion to support this letter and the zoning administrator, please say aye.
Aye.
And once we get an answer from its receipt, we will know where we go from there, time-wise. I mean, we know where we're going, but we'll know time-wise.
Well, it's out of our hands now.
Right.
It's up to the zoning and the town manager.
Manager and plan that one, okay. You're up, budget review.
Budget review. Doing the next section of the expense part of the budget. Couple of changes. First, town office, we increased the postage from 2,400 to 3,000 because last year we were at 3,400. Mailings have been up, so it shows a 25% increase, but overall, it's about a $700 increase for the town office. Office, for the office equipment, those numbers remain the same. The carpentry shop, we have no budget items in there. It's a reduction of $400 because the carpentry shop no longer exists. That's kind of an easy one. Public safety building, this is a new line item in the budget for the new public safety building. Basically, based on the size of the building and that, and, and things that we have in the past, what I've done is I've actually mirrored the budget for the town garage. I've used the numbers for them because they're very similar sized buildings. So, when it comes to custodial repairs and maintenance, custodial is something we didn't have in the fire department budget. Repairs and maintenance, contracted services, which is our fire alarm and things of that nature. Telephone, operating supplies, electricity and propane, those are basically the same numbers that we are proposing for the, for the garage. What we have also done in the fire department budget is reduced the utilities and, and the telephone portion of their budget. So, there's 15,000 that came out of that. So, it's a net increase of about 20 at this point as we go through. So, we're, we're, we don't know what the building's going to cost yet, but we're estimating it'll be similar. Police department, the only item, two items that have a significant percentage increase. One is the DUI and operations. It goes from zero budget to 5,000. We haven't budgeted numbers in that line item before, although there's numbers that are always expensed there. Those numbers are offset by revenues because this is the stuff we do as part of the, the shared program with the county, where they go out and we're actually providing some traffic control and DUI stops outside the town. So, this is, while it's an increase to the expense budget, there's a revenue side that goes with this that offsets it. So, there's no net expense to the town. The answering service, the price has gone up about $800. And the other significant item is computer-aided dispatch. It's going up about $200. So, the total is up about $8,000, five of which is, is covered by the, the revenue side of that. So, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering in that budget item. Fire department is, basically, they kept all the line items flat with the exception of the insurance number. The insurance number every year has been going actual at around 20,000. Last year, it was reduced for some reason to 11,000. It's going back to 22,000. And there's a net decrease for the fire department of 4,000 because we have that $11,000 increase plus the $15,000 worth of reductions from the utilities.
So, this, you said, I'm looking at this, the, not the percentage, the second, last column is the budget for FY '21, right?
Right.
One before is the budget for '20. If I come down to insurance, said it was 11,000, but it's going back up to 20,000. But we have in '21, 11,000.
Right.
So, is it 11,000 or 20?
No, that, that's the budget item. We're budgeting it 22. The actual for the year we just finished was 19,400.
So, okay. So, I'm looking at the column, it's saying 11,000 for the budget. It says 11,000 for FY '20, '21.
No, for '20, that's the one we're in now. FY '20 is the one that says 11,000. That's the budget we're in today.
Okay.
And then the 22 is for the FY '21.
Oh, it's doesn't-
I don't see 22.
It says 11 on ours.
I don't see FY '22. I see, I see FY 20.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I see FY '20, FY '21.
That was before the change was made.
And I see 11,000 dollars.
If you look up, I apologize. Here it is up here. There it is. That's the actual number that's in your overall thing. So, you have a predate.
Okay.
223, I, okay. You had the previous one.
Now, we're on the same page.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
I didn't realize I had given.
So, then that's going to, well, it, it's going up 11.
And down 15.
Which is 179.7, and then you have down there 183.554. So, what else is different?
The 15,000 for the utilities is down. So, there's the net for-
Something is up.
Huh? It's down $4,000 overall.
And 5,000.
It was up, and it's down 15.
So, the sheet that you show, so the building maintenance on my sheet shows 8,500, you show 8,000.
Right, well, this is, well, we, we got a revised budget from the fire department.
I know, but I'm just saying, so the next line, the fourth line, you show 40,400.
Right.
I show 40,400. The next line is 5,000. The next one is 22,300.
Right.
And there's nothing. Then 9750, then 44. And then, operating supplies, I show nothing.
Right.
You show four, that's what I'm looking for, the 41.1.
Right.
Okay? Because I was saying, I only have 179 and you have 183.
Yeah, that's-
So, it's the $4,111 is what I'm looking for.
Right.
There's nothing, nothing, 11,500. I have 14,800, you have 14,793.
This is their latest number.
63.50. Yeah, I know, I get that. And then, just move your cross. 5,500, 5,500, okay. So, the total, I have down on my sheet 168,700, and you have 183,554. That's all I wanted.
Yep, okay.
So, if I go to the public safety building, one, and it shows me electricity is 4,000. And if I go to the police department, do they have an electricity bill?
No, they, they do not.
But they will be over there, right?
Yes.
And then, if I go to the fire department, I don't show anything in electricity there. So, are we saying that that whole public safety building is only going to cost $4,000 in electricity?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, so, and it makes sense to me to have it as the public safety building and not giving it to each individual.
Department, right.
Group, that's all.
And, and the one thing I just noticed on the police, the office rental had carried through, and that's another 3,000 that's going out.
Okay, so which one?
Under police, it's office rental, second page.
Right, so that should go away.
That 3,000 goes away.
Okay.
So, that's an $18,000 reduction and 35 is new, so it's a $17,000 change.
So, so now I'll come back to public safety underneath telephone, right? But then I look at the police department, they have telephone internet for 2,200. And the fire department has nothing for the telephone.
Right.
So, shouldn't we be not charging the police department also for their phone?
That's correct, also, so that's the other 2,200. I missed, I was, I was paying attention to the entire fire department, I missed the police one.
I got it. The answering service I get, they should have. So, I just want, and that's why we're here, right?
Yep, 5,200. So, that's 5,200 in a reduction.
So, telephone is out, use and trainings type-ins, electricity, there's nothing. And where is the search and rescue group?
They're, they fall under the fire, they're under the fire department.
Fire department, last line.
They're included in there.
Okay. Last line under the fire department.
Okay.
And first, first response is right, right above that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's good for me there, huh?
We're up to solid waste?
Solid waste. A minor add to the, to the salary line item, and it's partially due to the bulky days for a little bit of extra overtime. And the other change is operating supplies from 300 to 700. And the cost of recycling is going up. We're getting billed for it. We don't get any deals for it anymore, so that's up about $1,000. So, net, it's about an $1,800 increase at the solid waste disposal, which is a 3% increase for that item.
So, previously, we had talked about that, that we're going to be required to compost?
We are currently, we are currently under the rules that require us to compost. We had two toaters, they've been kind of destroyed, we got to get new ones.
So, we're just collecting and taking it somewhere?
We, we have to, the only place that actually takes it at this time is in Middlebury. It is extremely expensive, so it's, my understanding, Casella is working on a program to get this up and running on a much larger scale and will be much better at it at that point.
What kind of recycling are we talking, what kind of composting are we talking about?
It's basically all food scraps as of July 1, 2020 are technically banned from the landfill. They, the issue of the banning is, you know, it's, it's fine. I know there's been some pullback on some of these issues because the towns are having difficulties.[1698.52] Um, I know there's been some pullback on some of these issues because the towns are having difficulties, it happened with the, the commercial haulers, things of that nature. So there was, there's been some changes, I don't know if there's gonna be any now, or if Casella will be online by then. But the hope is, we will have a better program for being able to deal with it.
So, there is a company, Grow Compost of Vermont, and the Killington Ski Resort up at the Grand Hotel is using them. I think they actually leave a huge container or whatever, and they fill it with the stuff from the hotel.
Restaurants, yeah.
From the restaurants. And then they come by whenever and take it away. The majority of the cost you're talking about is like for us trucking it out?
Well, we have to pay haulers to move it.
All haulers, man, so, I mean.
The issue, the issue we have is technically, there's no commercial use of the transfer station, which means you're not getting any restaurant waste, we're getting such, what we would get is such small quantities that if you put the, the larger systems in, they're gonna have to sit for such a length of time, there's other issues. You know, i.e. bears, and things of that nature that, that become involved, so the, the real goal is that somehow we'd have to find a way to partner, I think, somewhere that we can get it offloaded more in-between or something. We got, these are things that we have to work on over the next few months.
So I don't use the town dump. I use Rutland County Waste down on Gleason Avenue, and they take compost.
Right.
I believe it's ten cents a pound. So we don't have a lot, is there a way of us, you know, here we are, we go down to pick up sand or whatever, and...
Well, we're talking about pickups-sized loads, I mean, you're talking about, the toaters are basically like the, the Casella drop-offs where they do curbside pickup.
Right.
It's that, that's the size we're talking about, and actually, as far as I know, we have yet to have somebody bring it in separate.
Right, okay.
At this point. We were just, we were required to provide the toaters, but we haven't had, uh, use of it to this point.
Okay, so it's not costing us anything because nobody's bringing it in?
At this time, it's not, it will cost us if, and, and the bigger concern is, is if it's such a small amount, the cost per volume and the amount of travel and involvement there'll be, that's where the difficulty becomes.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I mean.
There's, there's a lot of challenges.
There's a lot of different things, there, there's a town in Connecticut that, um, has put in a digester, which actually they collect the, the scrap, food scraps, and they put it in there, and it produces heat and electricity and everything else. And actually, I mean, Connecticut's a lot bigger than here, but I mean, what they collect just in their town and area or whatever, produces enough electricity for like eleven thousand, eleven hundred homes. But there's also, I was looking at a system for the inn before I went over to the lease, that you actually hook it up, and it's a, it's a digester that takes so much food and automatically does it and gets, and, and puts it down the sewer line in a safe and easy way, so you're not, you know, so I don't know if we have to find something like that.
Well, the, the question, if, if we, if that was something we wanna investigate, uh, related to, uh, some sort of cogeneration or things of that nature, that would become a town-wide thing, where we would no longer want the restaurants to be sending it off, we would want everything to come to us. And no, and I guess we could talk to Casella and see what the actual volume they're getting at this point, and talk to what the resort is, is actually creating, and see if there's, if we're producing enough to make it worth, um, considering that type of system.
Do we still have that one subcommittee with Mike Kajulik and?
The energy committee?
Energy committee.
It's the energy committee of one, and he's not in town very often. So we're, it's Mike, Mike is it.
I'll give Mike a call. We can move on from that. Okay, thank you.
Um, library, library basically flat-funded, um, their budget. Um, the one change that we have talked about that did not make it in here at this time is under library staff, um, having a, uh, an increase, um, for support staff, um, due to, uh, as we started researching, and I did not know what all of the, 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 uh, support staff were getting paid, but we were paying them less than we're paying lifeguards. Uh, so there might be a couple thousand dollars that we wanna add to that line item to, to get them into a, a more reasonable pay scale. Um, it was my recommendation, it would be about forty-four hundred dollars, um, is what I, what I'm gonna propose as an increase.
From where?
And the support staff of library, under library staff.
Yeah, I know, but from where, from the thirty-five, or you?
Thirty, thirty-nine, one-seventy-five. Is that what it's, oh, no, it's already in there. On mine, not yours.
Thirty-five, one-seventy-five.
I have, I actually, I pulled up the wrong one on here, this was the old one, I did do an experiment with one, and it goes to thirty-nine, one-seventy-five, under library staff, uh, which makes the increase about three and a half percent instead of three.
Then my question on any of this stuff here is, are we adding any employees onto the staff?
No.
Or are we just, okay. So this, this is the issue that a lot of select board members in the past have, have had. So I come here and I look at library, and, uh, first column is the budget of nineteen. The second column is the actual of nineteen. And I come down to library staff, and we had budgeted thirty-four. We only spent twenty-nine, call it eight hundred, okay, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. And you're saying you would just like to go and bring them up to a couple dollar an hour raise or whatever, which would jump it up four thousand dollars.
Right.
Which would bring it up to thirty-nine thousand, right?
Yep.
But if our actual was twenty-nine, call it thirty thousand dollars, I mean, the thirty-four or thirty-five should cover it. If it's the same amount of people and it's the same amount of hours, you already have the right budget in the previous sheet of thirty-five, one-seventy-five.
Okay. I mean, I, the, the issue has been, I think there was a couple of lapses where they had people that had left and, you know, things of that nature, but I'll double-check the number of hours they were getting.
You know.
But that, yeah, I mean, I, and I had that same conversation with Jane, um, but assuming the fully planned staff, that's what this number's based on, um, if they don't have downtime and things of that nature, so, uh, but I will confirm that number. That's what we have for today. Next meeting will be the rec and the, and the, all the, the benefits and things of that nature, and the, um, the highway budget. Go through and try to, I'll try to get a preliminary capital budget numbers, is so we can start to look at what the total cost is. And then we'll start looking at the revenue side in, in November.
Rental registration program cost analysis. Do you have it that you could put up so these folks can see it?
Yes, I do. There it is. So, what I did is, we have, um, we have been, we have been in contact with a company called Host Compliance, it is a, uh, an internet-based manager slash, compliance assistant, um, that, that actually monitors thirty-six short-term rental sites. We talked to them about, you know, what the services they offer, what are they involved, they have over three hundred towns that they're doing this for, um, and looking at what the costs are. So, we'll start at the bottom of the actual item here, where, you know, there's, the, the first item that you have to, to employ is the address identification. Their estimate based on, and this is all based on the, the, they've already found that so far there's nine hundred and thirty-one short-term rental, rentals in Killington that are operating on, um, these internet rental sites. There's over a thousand listings, 'cause a lot of them have listings on more than one site, um, but it's nine hundred and thirty-one actual properties. So, the first item that you do is, they would do address identification, where they go out, they identify each one, they put an address to it, a photograph to it, um, and, and know what, that the rental is up, and then we send them, everybody a letter that's doing that, that would say, um, "We're starting a rental registration program, here's what you need to do," would have a list of instructions, and, and they would provide that service. And between the software monitoring and, and what they're writing, it's about thirty-one thousand dollars. Then there's compliance monitoring, which is the ongoing monitoring activity, um, which is the, what we'll continue to pay over time, um, which is the ten thousand four seventy-four. Compliance monitoring is looking at, uh, are they advertising what is approved? You know, we say, you know, the, it says you're a four-bedroom unit, you can rent to eleven people, are they renting the thirty? They would, we would then get a listing of any of the things that are outside the, the registration program. Rental activity monitoring is designed to help with, um, basically finding out, 'cause they can tell which, when it's rented, and, and things that are rented, and, and in the case of the town and in the state, being able to identify where they're supposed to be paying the one percent and things of that nature for their rooms and meals tax, and, and being able to keep up with that. There's a fee for a twenty-four-seven hotline, which means if neighbors, police, anybody needs to have contact, you can call the hotline, and then they contact the authorities or the rental owner, um, if there's an issue, like, you know, rental people might be living in New York, somebody's having a party at three o'clock in the morning, and they're being disruptive, and we have now a contact to get it, and they help with that. And then there's mobile monitoring and collection, which is all part of the, the address identification and things of that nature. But this was just a preliminary budget, just to look at, um, to give us an idea.
Let's go over the mobile monitoring and collection. So...
If we're, if we're gonna go, I, I'm not, I'm not, I can't remember all the details of that line item. Um, we would actually have them do a presentation to the select board as to what they do, and, and choosing if we wanna go in that direction, if we choose to move forward. Um, this was just to look at what the potential would be, if we were to buy all their services, you can, you can buy three of the services, leave two out, whatever you wanna do. But this was just to say, if we did the whole thing soup to nuts, what would it cost the town?
Right, I, I get that, what I'm getting, so, mobile monitoring and collection. So they might, so somebody comes in, they send out, they address, they identify the address.
Right.
They send out the letter.
Right.
Okay, then they have monitoring the compliance, that they're
Right.
not renting to thirty people on a four-bedroom or whatever.
Right.
If they are, then the town has some violation fee?
Well, it's the zoning violation.
The zoning violation.
Because this is being written, this part of zoning, it would actually be a zoning violation.
So there's no other fee, there's no other penalty.
This is just the zoning, the regular zoning violation that we talked about earlier.
Okay, so someone's renting to thirty when they're only supposed to be renting to ten or twelve or whatever. And then, there's a mobile monitoring, which sounds the same as compliance monitoring to me.
Right.
But it's more of a collection, what are they collecting?
And that's what I, I can't remember the details, I, I apologize for that.
I don't think that they're gonna be collecting our zoning violation fee.
No. Well, they, they do offer, the, the, they would, they would do the chasing for us if we wanted them to. But, you know, it's a matter of that.
Now I come back to the address identification, so it's a thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand dollar fee for year one, but...
Does it go away the second year?
It, not, not entirely, there's still a portion of it left, because they gotta keep monitoring, they gotta keep doing that annually to make sure that, has there been a bunch more added or subtracted, or, it's basically keeping the system current.
Wouldn't that, and that's why I just have questions here, because I would think that the address identification is the first year, boom. Now, this rental activity monitoring, they should be able to be monitoring the rental activity if somebody is not registered and they're renting.
Well, and that's, these are the details that we need to work out for those type of things.
And they should be able to see if somebody is not renting at all that used to rent, because the property changed, and it's a
Right.
a family that moved in, so the, I'm not knocking this, I'm just saying, these are my questions now.
And this is our first, our first look at, at a company, and we were just, we were having a conversation, and I was certainly not ready to start talking about this, but when we asked the question, what would it do to the budget? You know, I wanted to look at a worst-case scenario.
And so then I come up to the top, and I see a compliance clerk at forty-five thousand. Why do you have a compliance clerk if you have a compliance monitoring from a third-party source?
Well, there, and I didn't have any better title for that at this point, it, compliance may be the wrong word to use, what I, what I assumed we would need. And, and it's, at the end of the day, if we're gonna move in this direction, the amount of filing and clerical work that we're gonna need to do regarding this, we're gonna have to hire somebody. And my first thought was, well, you know, you would go hire a part-time person, they're gonna do this, it's gonna be probably more seasonal. But when I started looking at the, the issues around the town, and the amount of compliance, uh, whether it's OSHA, whether, I mean, they're, the amount of compliance monitoring we have to do regardless of this, has grown like probably three or four-fold in the last six or seven years. So, if we were gonna go in this direction here, it would probably be good that we would hire somebody that would do...
So I would call that person really a planner slash zoning administrator or assistant.
Assistant, yeah, or something along those lines, I just didn't have the right, well, the reason I use compliance clerk, because I wanted to include OSHA in it, and that's typically what they call them, is OSHA compliance. And then we have compliance to the way, we have the storm.
That person would really be working with the planner and the zoning administrator.
And there, that particular person, even though most of the rentals are gonna be in the winter, a lot of their work may be in the off-season.
No, the summer would be the heavier load, I think.
But a lot of their organization and getting everything squared away, and making sure everything's in the right place.
Right.
And not trying to set it up when they've got a thousand rentals going on.
Correct. The, I, and where I wrote planner full-time, we budgeted sixty-four thousand within the year we're in, and we're working with somebody who's working half-time right now, they would have to go full-time if we move in this direction. So I assumed the thirty-two thousand would be an additional cost, even though it's not added to the budget, it's costs we're not incurring at this moment, through this process. So, between the health officer piece and the planner full-time, and the amount of things that are going on, I expect that to become, go back to a full-time position. So, looking at this, just, you know, as a real rough draft, you know, I estimate around a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, um, being the expense, um, to run this program. And then, on the upper half, I just put in, you know, what numbers we've talked about in the past, if it was nine hundred and thirty-one units, and there's two hundred dollar fee, uh, it's about a hundred and eighty-six thousand, so that's about a thirty-four thousand dollar cushion. Just to give you round numbers to see, you know, 'cause basically, I think we just should have some order of magnitude discussions now, because at some point, if we're gonna move forward by the end of December, if we're gonna move forward with the registration program, we're gonna need to add this to the budget prior to January.
We're saying end of December, but not to be enforced this winter.
No, not for this year, I'm saying...
I don't want anyone out there like getting, you know, 'cause this winter.
The intent of December is, the intent of the end of December is only because we wanna put the budget numbers in the budget.
Right.
And it has nothing to do with...
I want that to be clear here, all right?
Yeah, there's no, there's no caught, there will be no...
This is just another discussion here, this is one piece of many pieces coming together.
We, we, just that, everything we wanna have line items in the budget for, we wanna have in by the end of December.
Coming out today and saying, we're gonna charge two hundred dollars times nine hundred and thirty-one, and...
This is just order of magnitude discussion.
Bar conversation.
Correct.
As you guys know, every time we've had a decision
Amongst us.
We've had a special meeting to invite the public in.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's the only topic of the discussion that night.
And I think we would be doing it, and we did it the last time.
We've done that with all course, we've done it with town manager, we've done with any, any type of a decision of this magnitude, we include the town.
Well, and actually, and I think the last time we had the, the discussion, we actually had it at a planning commission meeting.
Yes, we did.
So I think I, we would probably be heading in that same general direction, and with the initial discussion with the select board having the actual public hearing, if we wanted to make this modification to zoning.
There's a lot of pieces still not figured out and being worked on.
Correct.
And we may need someone to come in on an advisory level to get a, to help us get set up.
Right. So, what is, go ahead Chuck, you were gonna say something.
Have we, what's the name of this company that provides this service?
Host Compliance.
Have we evaluated any other companies that provide a similar service?
We have been looking for them, there's not a lot of them doing it yet, that are this, they're, they're probably the oldest at this point, and have the most experience and the best software, but we are looking.
Have we contacted any of the towns that actually use this service?
We are, if we're, if we're headed in this direction, we gotta do, we will do our due diligence and ask all the questions. 'Cause they, they had, they gave us the list of their three hundred clients.
What's our definition of short-term rental?
Thirty days or under.
Okay. Or under thirty days?
Under thirty days.
Thirty's the magical number that you don't collect.
Do we know how many people have submitted short-term, like, the one percent tax?
Um, as far as I know, it's, the only, there was only one company that was doing it for a while, and they're no longer doing it, which was Airbnb.
For like, all these people, so there's nine hundred and thirty-one units out there.
We're not hearing any.
So we don't get any, nobody submitting?
We have not gotten any one percent money related to this that we're aware of.
Okay, so a whole lot of people aren't paying their taxes?
No, 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 it's not, because, since I use Airbnb, you know, Airbnb is the one, some of these places, they say, even though I have a, um, a rooms and, it falls underneath rooms and meals tax, the two of them together, even though I hold a, a license number for rooms and meals tax, okay, Airbnb would not allow me to collect from the people. They collect the money, they're supposed to collect, collect the taxes and charge the taxes. Actually, Dave gave me a call when I was in Manhattan a few weeks ago, and, and brought up a, something to my, my attention, that I brought up to you, I believe, and to Jim Harrison, that Airbnb for the last few months has not been charging the, um, one percent in the town of Killington. So, this here could, you know, instead of having Dave tell us, may have alerted to us that we're not receiving the funds. And I know Jim Harrison right now is working with your company over there with, I mean, with June Butner?
Yeah, I know they're talking.
They've been talking or whatever, going back and forth or whatever to try to get it on, so, so...
It seems to be a bug.
Right.
In that, it seems to be a problem with Airbnb that they should correct and, and poll.
Right.
Homeway, the RBO, started at September first, collecting the tax as well. HomeAway, the RBO started at September first, collecting the tax as well.
Right.
So they're paying both Vermont and the one percent.
Right.
And then obviously, property managers pay the one percent on bookings we do.
Right. So the, the thing that I think the question would be is, is that with the state of Vermont, we really just get a check quarterly.
Right.
And we don't even know what it's really for.
No.
We really don't know who's paying it.
It's not broken down.
We just get a check, and, and that, that's hotels.
It's all together.
It's all together.
Yep.
And, you know, but it would, you know, I mean, it would be nice to know that, you know, we all have a license number, and why couldn't the state break out that there is a thousand, a thousand properties with, with hotels, and this is what each one is paying?
And, and the one thing I would like to point out is, is the numbers we're seeing, um, even with a, a significant increase in visitors to Killington lately, um, we're only seeing three, maybe, you know, maybe a four or five percent difference, um, in the increase in, in what we're getting for the rooms and meals taxes.
Right.
Um, so it's not like there's been a significant increase since they were collecting, so I'm not sure how much they're actually collecting, but we don't know.
But we also know at the same time that Airbnb has stopped collecting for the last three or four months.
Yes.
And the other one just really started September one?
Yes.
So
All the individual owners were supposed to collect.
So now you're, you're, you're indifferent than I am, but basically, what would you say, the split between Airbnb, Airbnb forty percent of your business?
Seventy.
Seventy. So when you lose for four months, seventy percent of the one percent, that's a big, it's a big number.
For my clarification, so Airbnb collects the one percent, sends it to the state of Vermont.
Airbnb is supposed to collect, not, when you book on, when you go in and book on Airbnb, it tells you what the charges for the room, then if there's any other fees, and then it says state tax nine percent, and then local tax one percent, they charge the customer. Then they give this, whatever the split is to, of the rental to the owner, but they're supposed to then send the check for the state taxes to the state.
For that one percent.
It never touches
No.
The Airbnb money never, the tax money never touches the renter. Never comes in hand to the renter. It goes straight from the, from Airbnb to the state.
And that's for all rentals.
That's for, that's for Airbnb. That's Airbnb. Is it the same with the other company now that started September one?
The RBO HomeAway now collects it as well.
Now they collect it.
September first.
I, I, if I rented to somebody individually, which was about fifty-five percent of my bookings was direct with me, I would charge those people the tax, and then at the end of the month, I will have to file a, a paperwork to say how much I collected. Killington Central Reservations, they book, okay? They send me the money, and then I have to include that into. But Airbnb, I would have, I mean, it, it's a mess. Airbnb, I would not, I have to strip that number out because of my revenue, because I don't wanna pay ten percent of the state.
That's already been collected.
That's already been collected by someone else and supposedly paid.
Okay.
It's confusing.
So we're not adopting this at this time, it's just a step forward.
Well, are you asking us if this, is this something we
I'm not, I'm, what I'm doing is setting a placeholder, um, to say that if we're gonna move forward, it, it's basically opening the discussion. We probably won't revisit it till the end of November, beginning of December, um, as we move through and, and see if we're gonna make the zoning change. Um, but then trying to refine these numbers and turn it into a real budget line item where we can do the revenue and the expense and, and, and then view the effects, cause my goal is, you know, the first meeting in December is when we'll be talking primarily about tax rate.
Right.
Um, and then, and then making any modifications at that point, and then hopefully finishing the budget at the second meeting in December.
So between now and November, I would like more clarification of what mobile monitoring collection is.
Well, my assumption is, is, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll hear from the attorney to have the conversation about the language.
Right.
As soon as we have that conversation, then I'm gonna recommend, whether it's at a regular select board meeting or a special meeting, that we then have a presentation from Host Compliance to explain their whole, to do the presentation to explain the entire process.
And before we even have them in here, I would like what Chuck was
Yeah, we're gonna look around and see if we can find
No, but contacting towns that they use to give us.
Right. No, and that's what I, I would assume, we're looking at the second half of November for that, that program.
But you can start doing that right away.
Yes.
Looking into other towns.
Actually, we have a conference call with them in about two weeks, um, with this group, and then we can start that process.
I'm talking about towns that are using them.
No, I'm saying, the, the, to confirm all their list and get their most current list, and then we can start calling.
Okay.
Did they come up with a nine thirty-one? How did we get that number?
They, they found it on, online, that's what they found. Cause they actually can identify the addresses and, and do the counts, because then, and the, the system actually will, will weed out the duplicates, cause I said there was like eleven hundred and something listings, but there was a lot of duplicate listings.
I have a lot of friends that are renting their houses, and a lot of friends that, you know, at times contact me on this subject. And basically, really it comes down to that, that everyone's, the people that are, right now that are concerned about it, to me, seem to be more of the people that are in compliance, and this will actually help them be in compliance. To prove that they're in compliance.
Right.
And stop some of the others that aren't in compliance and bring them up to date. There are so many of, I have a dozen friends that have these places, and, and they've spent money on putting in their egress windows and putting in the fire stuff, putting in the staircase that comes down, they handle those around and have the grip or whatever. They've done all this stuff, you know, and I think it, you know, not saying one hundred percent, but something like this will help promote those places better, that if you're on something like this and
Well, and, and, and I, and not
I mean, you would never see a fine again, you know.
Right.
Unless you're really not the legit place.
Well, and the interesting thing was, when we were first having these discussions, when we were having these discussions in July, um, the town received a phone call by, for someone who rented a place in, in Killington, um, came up here in July, um, had paid two thousand dollars, and the place didn't exist, and they didn't know where to go, they didn't know if it was a rental, and it was just something that was made up.
Well, Whit, you get that about ten, twelve times a year?
Yeah, it's kind of a little bit down, but we do get those. We had one, a year ago, Christmas week, twenty-one thousand dollars for a family of like fourteen.
Holy moly.
That's a, that's a Craigslist scam.
Yeah.
You got wire money that they're not supposed to wire.
Yeah, but if we advertise ourself as, you know, and there is a check thing or whatever, it could stop something like that. And twenty-one thousand dollars, was it a two or a three bedroom?
I think we also need to be clear though, like exactly what our goal is for all these things, like what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I think part of what we're trying to do is, we've got a lot of businesses in town that already meet requirements, and they meet safety, and they meet water, and they meet her, and the rental companies are right there with them in terms of following the rules, if you will, and we're looking to basically level the playing field, so everybody is being held to the same standard.
It's a health and safety issue.
What we're looking to do, and it is health and safety.
It's just health and safety, it's wastewater, and, and it's safe, it's, it's, it's fire safety, and these are laws that all exist. Um, the one thing that I find it's difficult, and we find it in so many areas, um, in the state, is we have all the, the rules that we need, but there's no place where there, this hand doesn't know what that hand is doing, and we don't have any central system that says, okay, have we gotten everything? And, and in many cases, and, and since I've been in the position, in the town manager's position, people come in and like, I didn't know that I had to do this part, you know what I mean? And, and I think it, just as much as anything else, it's information and making sure everybody's compliant, because the, the fact is, um, if you have a rental place and you're renting to air through Airbnb, and you have not taken all these things, and you have an incident, your insurance company is not gonna cover you.
Or Airbnb's insurance is not gonna
Yeah, I mean, you're not, the, the homeowners' insurance, and we've gone, and Preston went to a conference, and they said, no, they can deny coverage if you're renting and you're not telling them and you're not meeting the requirements.
Right.
So it's, it's a safety thing for both the people renting and the people who are renting their places.
Okay. Thank you. Do you folks have anything you want to add to this before we leave?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Throw out one, um, you know, just hypothetical for consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've got a lot of zoning agencies, and my knowledge, we don't hire an outside company to enforce any of the zoning requirements. So what if, just as an experiment in year one, we went ahead with the registration fee, since most people are already in compliance, and build their own registration, but we don't hire a company, and we just see how close we become in actual to the EREPO. And then if we find that while there's a big gap, well, then we talk about compliance and less than the initial year's budget.
I mean, that was where originally the conversation started. Um, the issue is, we don't have a way to monitor what's online and what people are advertising. And, and that's where the actual violations occur, and we don't know when they get there unless something happens, um, or they get reported by a neighbor. So the question becomes, okay, does it become a hollow rule if we don't have an enforcement or a monitoring program of some sort? And that's, that's where the concern lies. So, and these are things that we will, we will have a conversation about, but I do believe that, you know, for the, I, I actually don't have any concern for the people who are following the rules. You know, they're the ones that we're gonna know they're doing it and they're following the rules. The issue is the people who come in, get their permit, and go out and advertise how they want, and I, and it may only be ten percent of them, or it might be five percent of them, it might be fifty, fifty residences, but that's a huge risk. When you talk about health, when you talk about issues, we've had several, um, homes blow their, their wastewater systems out, and, and that stuff starts to surface, and that's a health issue.
With neighbors too.
That's where a lot of this is driving.
Excuse me? With neighbors.
Yes. I mean, you know, the, the thing is, is we have to find a way to, it, and it's, you know, it's the, it's the same as anything else. Any rule comes from us having to deal with protecting ourselves from our neighbors, and I don't mean, you know, our specific neighbors, but, um, somebody has to have been violating something for this to caught, to happen.
So now, when you take Vince's, um, what if, okay, um, this assistant here, where you're saying that we have a lot of zoning regulations that are not followed, I mean, this person is not just going to be short-term rental, it could be a person be looking into actually enforcing the zoning regulations on full-time rentals year-round, also on full-time residents to make sure that they're in compliance.
The goal is, is it's, it's overall compliance, you know, and it, you know, cause in, in the case of the one we're in litigation with, whether or not they win, they still have Act two fifty to deal with, you know, so the issue is, you know, we don't, we're not I, I think the town should strive to make sure people are aware, when you come into the town office and you wanna get a building permit, you should know all of the things, there should be a checklist in there of things that you have to address. And that's what Preston and I are actually working on, is to try and come up with a way that when somebody comes in, or before they get a C of O, they know all the things they have to have accomplished, you know, they're not all necessarily town permit items, but if you have to go to Division of Fire Safety, or if you have to go somewhere else, that you know.
So I built my house in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, and the way the town was running it was, is that there are town regulations, and this is what you must meet, and you're off on your own for state and federal or whatever else, okay? And you need to comply with whatever. And, um, I built a house that had a walkout basement, and my ceiling in my basement was ten feet high in my basement, then you have the one little space in between for all your stuff, and then my second floor, and it turned out that between the, the lowest part, and it was never told to me in the process, the lowest part of your ground
It was too high.
Too, no, no, I got lucky, to the second, to the floor of the second floor, so above the main floor, could that be any more than twenty feet? I was nineteen point eight feet, so I was okay, but no one ever said
Right.
I gave in plans for a house that was gonna have this walkout basement with ten foot ceiling and everything else. And I know there was a house up when I was building in two thousand and seven up in High Ridge, there was a big house up there that was going up, and that gentleman had to come back, and he actually had to rip out his door, it's concrete, then redo concrete, and actually bring up the grade level to make it so it was under the twenty-foot level. And that's what we're trying, you're making sure that all the rules and regulations, and it's not like, come on for your CO, and hey, by the way, you got another fifteen thousand dollars, cause you gotta take that window door out.
You know, I said, it's as simple as making a checklist, did you do this, did you do that, did you, and here's, and here's the rules. And it's, and it's really not complicated, but I think with a minimal amount of effort in that area, we can help homeowners avoid a lot of issues.
Have we spoken, have we spoken to other ski towns about what they're doing? Cause I know at some point, Stowe had a proposal for a two hundred dollar registration fee, and they scrapped it.
I don't know, I haven't talked to Stowe about theirs at this point, but, um, no, I, I haven't talked to the other towns at this point.
And that will be part of the process.
Yes.
Especially when we look into this company of who they're doing.
Right.
Are they doing anyone in Vermont? Are they ski resort towns?
Right.
Okay. Managers report?
Uh, just briefly, tax sale update is, um, next, a week from today is the tax sales. We've had more activity, but no, no other ones come off the list at this point. Um, so right now, that's just moving, moving forward. Public safety building, as you can tell.
Tax sale, is the website going to be updated? The date was wrong on the Killington Town website.
For October eighth?
It said December eighth, I believe.
Oh, I will check that.
And, and no, I don't know if there's other documentation that's gonna go off or not.
Well, there, there's, on the website, there's a, a copy of the list of the six properties and what the values are, and all of that's on, that's up on the website at this point.
Okay.
So. Uh, public safety building, um, hopefully, uh, they have, getting very close, I think after today, we were gonna be at finished floor level with gravel. Um, so foundations are due to start, uh, in the next week, week and a half, um, so we're, we're moving right along, and I, hopefully we'll be getting the structural steel pretty quickly. Um, it, the project is moving on, we will be going through the winter, unfortunately, but, um, we are headed in the right direction.
I'd like to give a big thanks out to Craig Mosier, I go by there on Saturdays and Sundays, and it's actually nice to see someone that knows there is a deadline, and he's out there on his own Saturdays and Sundays, doing work.
Yep. No, they're, they've, they've pulled a lot of work in a very short period of time to help get caught up, so they've done an outstanding job.
And they've also concentrated on the work needed so that the concrete people can come in to pour a base.
Right.
And they, then they will go and do the outside with landscaping and clearing and whatever they have to do out there after that cement is in.
Right. We're gonna, we don't know how much drainage will get in this fall, but we, you know, we'll, we'll be in a position where we can continue to get the building done, and if we have to finish the drainage in the spring, we will.
Mm-hmm.
But I believe the, a couple of the big detention basins will be done.
It's just nice seeing somebody out there on Saturdays and Sundays, knowing that we need to get this thing wrapped up.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, last weekend, I think it was, not this, not two days ago, last weekend, um, the library held the Fairy Tale Festival, they had over a thousand visitors.
Yeah.
Um, they're doing very well, and actually, the, the, uh, overall desire of the people that are coming and, and the other libraries is for it to become annual, they were doing that every other year, and they're talking about making an annual event now. Um, so it is becoming very popular, and it is bringing a lot of people into the area, and actually, um, the one part of the Fairy Tale Festival that brings in a large amount of people that stay, um, in hotels and things is the, uh, is the Viking group. Um, cause they do come from all over the world, so it's been a very, very exciting event, and it's bringing, it is bringing in some people. Uh, on the planning side, we did submit yesterday the planning grant request. Um, basically, this is for an update to our zoning, uh, map, and also to update our zoning regulations. Apart from the discussion, uh, about this, this is about just making sure we're current with all of our zoning regulations and, and that, and the most that the town would play, if we, or awarded the grant is about a thousand dollars, um, with help from the Regional Planning Commission. Um, and that's all I have for department updates, unless you want me to say the one word that I'm typically prohibited from saying.
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any liquor control tonight?
There is liquor control. Tonight, we have mountain merchants in for a renewal.
Tonight, we have mountain merchants in for a renewal, however, typically in the past, the town approved, what is it?
One and two.
First class and second class licenses, worst first class being for beer and wine, second class for selling packaged goods, third class was always issued by the state. Third class is the classification that allows the sale of liquor, you know, the vodkas and things of that nature. The state, as of July 1st, put in place, now the town has to approve the class three licenses as well. So we have a class one renewal here, and then a class three application for the mountain merchants, which the select board would need to sign as it's a new application for class three.
And the last page of that there is because...
Is the lease.
Mountain merchants is different than whatever, there's two different partners, so the landlord has signed one to tell us that it's okay for the tenant to, to do it.
Right, and the landlord is D and K Properties, and the tenant is Mountain Merchant, and we have a copy of the lease related to that.
I would make a motion to approve our signature for the new first, third-class license, for the town clerk to move forward with processing the class one and three.
One and three.
One and three.
All those in favor?
So now we're going to be seeing this next year on all of them, that it will be...
From now, any renewals going forward, we'll have this included.
I'm guessing this is us right here.
I'm on the town website, and it says here October 8.
It may have been changed.
Yeah. What's confusing to me is that, is the letter, and then if you want to see what the actual prices are, you don't click on the individual, you go to the second one, taxes and fee schedules, and that will show you what...
That's actually just a spreadsheet of all six.
That wasn't checked before, I checked before, so it was all on me.
Okay. So. We should invite John in.
Yeah, they've been sitting out there a long time.
Having fun out there.
Yeah. The next item is Green Mountain National Golf Course.
We make sure they sign in as well.
Yep.
What's that?
They need to sign in.
Yeah.
Come on, guys.
She doesn't know who you are yet, David.
I just got a message from Airbnb.
Yeah.
My team is working to resolve the one percent tax collection, collection issues for Killington, Vermont.
Okay. I would just like to say...
That was very, I literally just came in, that was my way of thinking.
But I'd just like to thank Dave, because he did call me, and then, because he was trying to work on it, and then Jim Harrison stepped in, and I think he kind of moved it faster with June Butner.
Okay. You?
You can have it. Don't, don't ever give me anything that's signed. Until Lucretia gets to see it first.
So, with Brown Golf initially, we'd like to do, because it's going to be a two-part discussion, for those of you that are not from Brown Golf, the first part of it will be how we're do, where we are now, now that we're done with September and into October. The second half of it will have to do with personnel for the upcoming year and the remainder of this year, so that will be done in executive session, because we will be discussing specific personnel. But the first part of it...
Just want to quickly...
Either you or David? Yeah, just where we are, how's it going?
Sure. I'm John Brown, I'm the president of Brown Golf, been working with David just on, throughout the course of the year. Year's been a pretty solid year for us so far, our strategies have been about maximizing the premium days, we've been able to grow your average dollar per round about two, two dollars, just over two dollars a round. We've done about the same amount of rounds, but profitability is up about forty thousand dollars as far as revenue, year to year, and expenses are down about sixty thousand year to year. So overall, it's really been a strong year, next year, transitioning through the wintertime, hopefully it'll be the year that we can really take it up to the level that we think, you know, are the possibilities of the property. So, if you remember, last year, we came in, I think we started April 1st or May 1st, I forget, it was right at the beginning of the season, we didn't really have a lot of time on property, there was a lot of transition that first year with, there was some movement with some staffing and so forth. This year's been a much more stable year, credit to David and his team, we're excited about the future, and I think the culture's getting better, I think the golf course profitability's getting better, I think overall, just our focus on how we're going to bring in rounds over the wintertime, we have a winter, winter sales and marketing plan that we're going to review in executive session, which is really geared towards two things, how do we continue to bring golf packages in, eight player, twelve player, twenty players, and then how do we showcase Killington as a whole in the summertime, not just golf, but everything that is available here in Killington's summertime, how do we really showcase this as a, as a summer destination? So, those are our goals and our focus, and we're excited about 2020 and beyond.
No, I think that's, that's right where we're headed, and, and, you know, building partnerships up and down the access road to encourage the overall summer experience is, is going to be a big part of where we, where we move looking forward, and that's, that's exciting. I know we've done a little bit of that in the past, but, you know, to have that as a focus moving forward is what we're looking to do.
So we, just, I know that I've heard it, but the projected closing date, since we're closing in on it?
We're, I, I'm looking at October 20.
Yeah.
So reasoning behind that is that, well, the last week from October 40 to October 14 to 20, when I last looked, I had twenty-five players on the tee sheet. So it's not necessarily a environmental decision, meaning weather, it comes down more that we are spending dollars on the golf course and we don't have anyone playing. So it comes to a point where you just have to draw a line in the sand and say, it's been a great year, thank you very much, we're closed, we'll see you, my, you know, we'll see you next year. My idea is open as early as we can and set a close date, and that way we don't leak too much at that tail end of the season.
Okay. What date did we close last year?
October, well, the same weekend, the third weekend in, in October.
What were the, the counts for then, back that last...
It was exactly the same, it was in terms of what did we do in October, or...
That last week, how many rounds or whatever, or...
I don't know off the cuff, I'd have to go back and look. I know we did, we did eight hundred rounds, around eight hundred rounds in October last year. A good week for us is around seven hundred, so that was a three-week period where we did eight hundred, as opposed to a good week where we do seven hundred.
Yeah. We had pretty, well, for golf, it was pretty bad weather.
Yeah, October was...
Getting ready for World Cup, it was pretty good weather. But that's, that's part of the reasoning behind it, is if, if nobody's coming in, why are we, you know, sending everybody out every day to, to work the course and cut the grass and rake the traps and everything else that goes with it?
Well, at the same time, doesn't it kind of, the longer you stay open for the few golfers coming in, kind of take away from the grounds crew getting out there and doing what they have to do?
There is a, there is a lot of preparation, yeah, at, in the end of the year, that needs to be done to winterize the course moving forward, there's some chemical application to help with snowmold and that type of thing, the physical, you know, covering of greens and, and just getting the golf course ready for wintertime, removing all the signs, getting all that out of the way, it's, it's probably a week's process. So if you do stay open longer, and then all of a sudden you get caught with snow, which can happen, we get into November and we don't have the opportunity to shut the course up as satisfactorily as we would like to.
Okay. Okay. Me? Remember? No, I just want to see if you had any questions before we went into executive session.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, at this point, we are going to be discussing personnel, our, I think he's the only superintendent we've ever had, is Peter Bissell, has told everybody, including his crew and us, that this is his last year, and he'll be retiring, so part of the personnel discussion is, what direction do we go in here, in terms of trying to, well, we'll find someone to take his place, his position, we don't know that they're going to take his place. So at this point, at...
Motion, eh? Motion to go into executive session at 7:52.
7:52.
For personnel and contracts, because it's also then switching a position to a contract with Brown Golf, so...
Thank you all for being here tonight and your input, thank you.